...to be together. Thank you. We are commanded, we are instructed in your inspired word to pray for those in authority over us and this body of me who lead this city. We ask your special blessings upon them and all that shall be accomplished by them as they lead us and help us to follow them and what we can do to try to help our city. We thank you for the many years that you've let us stay here upon this earth and for every blessing, we just praise your wonderful name. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Brother Bob. But if you would, please could stand there because we would like to recognize you with the following proclamation. Certificate of recognition. Whereas the Reverend R.J. Barber Jr., known affectionately as Brother Bob, answered the call to preach at the age of fourteen and after completing seminary studies in Fort Worth, Texas, he founded the Worth Baptist Church in 1954. And whereas, upon the death of his father, the Reverend R.J. Barber Senior, who in 1931 founded the Baptist Tabernacle in Danville and in 1932 started Tabernacle Time Radio Broadcast. Brother Bob became pastor of the Baptist Tabernacle on January the first, 1962, took over the Tabernacle Time Radio Broadcast. And whereas, under the leadership of Brother Bob, the Baptist Tabernacle experienced dramatic growth and in 1973 moved to its current location on Highway 58 East. And whereas, due to health reasons, Brother Bob resigned the pastorate of the Baptist Tabernacle in 1986 with the intentions of retiring from pastoral duties. However, he later served as pastor of the now Spring Garden Community Church and also Shallow Baptist Church in Milton, North Carolina. And whereas, Brother Bob continues to speak in local churches and is well-known for his many years of hospital and nursing home ministries. And whereas, on this 55th year, Brother Bob continues to deliver the gospel of Jesus Christ on Tabernacle Time, which is the oldest daily religious broadcast in the nation and is heard twice daily on local radio. Now, therefore, I, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby recognize and commend Reverend R.J. Barber Jr., Brother Bob, for his faithfulness to the ministry in spreading the gospel throughout our community and nation and with him many more years of health and strength to continue with his passion of Tabernacle Time. Given under my hand this third day of January 2017, John B. Gilstrap, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and all of the Capitol members and all of you here. God bless my brethren. I'm happy to be here tonight.
Thank you.
I would like to say that I feel so proud.
If you would, I'm going to give you a few minutes back at the microphone so we all can hear you.
I don't go for each other's time.
(laughter)
We use a good rhyme.
I just want to say a word to you about me.
Certainly, I'd love for you to. And when you speak, if you'll pull that mic down just a tad so we'll be sure to hear you.
I have been many, many times in this room back in the day. When I looked around, I was fixing to say to you up there, I'm pretty sure I have the honor tonight of being the oldest person in this room. And I'm proud for it. I'm glad the Lord has let me hang around here a little, few days longer. And I want to say to every one of you councilmen, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, I pray for you daily as the word commands. And I think you're doing what I hear and observe and a remarkable job. And I want to pray for you more. I really do. We're in a time I do not have to say that we need great godly leadership and advice, right? Our nation tonight, we all agree that we need God's blessings. Amen? And I just want you to know that I just, I'm very happy. I feel real honored to be with you men tonight and when all of you, God bless you. And John, I wish I could tell some personal stories on you, but I'm going to wait until we get to you. I love you all of you. God bless you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. I believe Brother Bob has the distinct honor of recently celebrating his 89th birthday. Congratulations. Please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jones?
Here.
Dr. Miller?
Ah.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Shanks?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
This time we'll hear citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda. It will be heard at this time. Citizens who desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is considered. I would like to remind you that speaking on communications not on the agenda item, individuals will have a five minutes for your presentation. If you're representing a group, you will have ten minutes. Anyone wish to speak to an item not on the agenda? Please come forward, state your name.
Thank you. My name is Paul Leapy and I live in the Old West End. According to the city website, council is, and I quote, "to provide for the protection of the general health, safety, and welfare of the public." As you well know, public safety and especially the rate of crime are an increasing concern for your constituents. This is being driven by the most visible of crimes, homicides, which doubled here from 2014 to 2015 and doubled again this past year from 2015 to 2016. While it's too soon to compare our 2016 crime data to other Virginia independent cities, Danville did not fare very well in 2013, 14, or 15. In all three of those years, we had the highest incident rate of all similar-sized cities. The number of incidents in many of those other cities went down in those years while ours was still going up. And several similar cities have crime rates that are half of what we have here in Danville. Now, of even greater concern, rate of homicides per citizen in Danville during 2016 was greater than the country's, than what occurred in the country's murder capital, the city of Chicago. Think about that for a moment. More murders here per citizen than in the city of Chicago. That's pretty serious. I see on your agenda today appropriations to improve the city's infrastructure and to make the city more business-friendly. Those are good things, but they will be for naught if we become known as Little Chicago. I wonder how many companies decided not to locate here because of our crime rate. Are we so blinded by the last economic crisis, the closing of the mills, that we're failing to see the new crisis that's already upon us? Violent crime is real and measurable and has social and economic impacts. In addition to the grieving widows and children, violent crime reduces property rates, reduces property values, increases the cost for courts and social programs, and causes residents to leave the city. I wonder who in this room, maybe one of you will be the next to say, enough, I'm out of here. None of us want to live in a city with the highest incidence of crime in the Commonwealth. I suggest to you a stretch goal of shifting Danville from the least safe to the safest mid-sized city in Virginia within the next three years. Make it your highest priority. Talk about it at every meeting. Enlist the entire community. Celebrate every little success the same way we celebrate every job that comes to our city. New businesses and new residents would be drawn here as a result of that kind of effort. Will you take crime reduction in Danville as a personal mission? I sure hope you will. Your leadership is desperately needed at this point, and we hope you step up to the plate. Thank you and Godspeed.
Thank you. And let me just add that council also is very concerned. Council has had many work sessions relating to this exact same topic. Matter of fact, we had a retreat and spent a day and I talking about solutions to our violent crime. And I think we are at a very close point where we're going to be announcing some of the procedural changes, excuse me, that will bring about change in our city for the good. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. My name is Colonel Retired Lawrence Smeeter, City Council, City Manager, Council Members. Obviously, Paul and I have the same wavelengths. I'm also here to speak about crime. And I will tell you that almost ready, being prepared to, going to release is the wrong answer. We're already 14, 15, 16 murders past the time when a plan should have been on the street. You know, a funny thing happened to me yesterday. I was listening to the local radio station, 103.3, and the announcer discussed the crime statistics for Danville. And then he went on to Chicago and talked about Chicago's crime statistics. And then he had a public official from Chicago was on the radio station. And I thought about that and I said, why aren't I hearing from our mayor on the local radio station yesterday or from our city council members? Well, I went on to River City TV and I got to view some of your interviews, New Year's resolutions that you did. And I'm so great. I did actually find something out there. But I will tell you that Joseph Nye, who is considered probably the sixth most important political scientist, national strategist in the United States of America and in the world, worked for the Clinton administration, probably would have been a national security advisor for John Kerry if he had been elected, he wrote a book called Soft Power. And he says that too often governments, whether they're federal or local, use hard power. They only use the police. And on the Nextdoor Neighborhood website where there's nine neighborhoods, 500 neighbors, and each neighbor probably has 2.3 kids in the house, right, and a husband or a wife, so probably 2,000 people, they've been talking about crime in the city. The only person I've ever heard chime in on that Nextdoor Neighborhood has been Lee Vogler. But a lot of things keep coming back. They keep pointing at the chief of police as being the person who's not getting a job done. That's just hard power. Joseph Nye will tell you hard power is your military force or your police force or your economic dollars. But your soft power is diplomatic. It is your councilmen reaching out to the neighborhood associations and talking with people, going out to the churches. It's your councilmen's or your mayor's getting on the TV, getting on the radio broadcasting, hey, let's make Danville great again. Let's bring the crime down. How can we help you? It is communication. It is billboards. It's more than just giving three things to the chief of police and saying, hey, this is what I want you to do for the next three months to reduce crime in the city. We've got to attack this in a holistic way. We cannot just count on our police force to keep crime at bay. It's not going to happen. One of our council members, I believe Dr. Miller mentioned on his New Year's resolution that we have to improve education in Danville. We have to make our schools the best schools. Exactly. Correct. We have to. The question is, how do we do that? All right. Getting a track for the track team, great idea, but that's still not going to get it to be the best high school. So I would like to ask this mayor and the city council, what have you done since you were re-elected or elected into office this past year? What are you doing? And what will you do to reduce crime in a city? How will you do it? We need you to tell us this. Our citizens want to know. And we'd like to see some of you on Nextdoor chiming in occasionally. So yeah, that was a good idea, having a gun buyback program or having more, more events for kids in the parks. Something for our youth so that they're not thinking of other things to do. And one question I had for our very nice reporter over here that's always here is, how did a 19-year-old get a gun to drive down by knees and start shooting his gun? Where did the gun come from? Did he have a job? I would really like to know where that gun came from. Did it come from a family member? Did it come from a swap meet? Was it stalling out of a house? We never hear that. We never hear the feedback on some of these crimes that occur. We'd love to hear that also. And I think if you start looking into stuff like that, you might see solutions. I thank you, but I still would like to know, what have you done? What, what are you doing and what will you do? Thank you.
Well, I certainly can't ask for all of council, but I would like to say that council is addressing, has addressed. I know that's not what you want to hear. Problem wasn't created overnight. It's not going to be resolved overnight. Council is taking the holistic approach. We are looking at the total community development, not just policing. Matter of fact, for some council, in some of our discussion, policing has not been our, is not the highest priority. All of this takes advanced planning and all of it takes implementation and all of it takes funding. And I know it's not the answer you want to hear, but I'm simply telling you, we have, since I have been mayor July 1, have been addressing this weekly. And why we aren't on the media? Well, you know, you just can't say, let me get on the media and they respond. You can't just say, quote me in the paper and they respond. It has to be a newsworthy story and it has to be something that they would like to promote, publicize, and write about. And we have no control over what they choose to say. I will say that we have communicated with the media. We have communicated with the public. We have met with the churches. We have met with the communities. Matter of fact, I'm twice with West End Group that I have attended and met and discussed other things, but the crime problem's certainly come up. Now, I say that to say this, it's a concern that all citizens have. And we plan to address it in a very, very, I don't want to use the word forcible, but we want to address it in a very direct way that will have lasting results. Any other councilman wish to chime in? Mr. Vogler?
Yeah, I was going to talk about it at the end, and I still might a little bit, but if, since we're talking about it right now, I just want to tell you, and I'm sure that this is an opinion shared by everybody on council, but for me personally, it is my, as you mentioned earlier, a personal goal or a personal mission to see this violent crime come down in our city. It is the single most important thing that I'm focused on as a councilman this year. As you mentioned, economic development, all these other things we do are important, but if you don't have a city that people feel safe in, it's not going to matter. And I feel pretty confident in saying that big changes are going to come this year in the way that we're addressing crime, some of which I wanted to see for a while, and thankfully, I think now they're going to happen. I don't want to spend a whole lot of time talking about it, but if you want to look up focus deterrence, that's going to be a big part of it. There's a book by David Kennedy called Don't Shoot. He was a part of the Boston Miracle that has been replicated in places across the country that I think would be very effective here. I think we're going to be doing more in community policing, which I've also always been a big proponent of, continuing to work with the schools, to do more to work with the schools. A lot of these are young people. They're small groups of people. I know it is a big problem, but they are small groups of people. And for the most part, we know who are involved in these things. And I think that makes it easier to identify how to deal with them. Church and community leaders are going to be a big part of this. And it's going to take, as I think many people have mentioned, there is not a singular police solution to solving what we're dealing with. It's going to take a multifaceted approach from a lot of groups. One of the things that I asked for, we're going to be doing, is having a task force that is involved of several different sectors working together. It's not to bring in the media and do this big, you know, dog and pony show. It's a working group that is going to actually work towards implementing these solutions. And I know that we're hopefully going to get an update tonight on where we stand on that. But I know that council is relentlessly focused on getting this addressed. And we should be rolling out to the public, I think, very soon in detail, more of these things. But a lot of what I just talked about tonight, but we are going to have some big changes coming this year. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jones?
First of all, thank you all for being here this evening. Council has been throughout the entire community. Sometimes council find places where we're not invited. Council went to the Stonewall community just a few weeks ago. And we were at the Stonewall community, several of us offering all kinds of advice, listening to our citizens and hearing from the citizens. Council then went to the White Rock community. Council then went to the Wendell Scott community. I personally, along with some of the council members, when the shooting took place in Cardinal Village, we were there to console those parents and those persons who were shot. We go through the Housing Authority, Cardinal Village. We were just there a couple of weeks ago. We're in and out of this community. Council has a joint retreat this coming Saturday morning, all day long with the school board. We're partnering with the school board to see what we can do together to make a difference in our community. Oftentimes I say to the entire council, what have we done since we've been elected officials, as Reverend Barber stated in his prayer? Each and every last one of the council members got together at the retreat. And in every retreat, if you would have heard, if you all could videotape it, there was no media at the retreat. But if you'd have heard the conversations that was going on in the council, this council was very frustrated and is frustrated with what's going on in our community. Councilman Campbell had an event on the first of the year. We just came out of that just a couple of days ago. We stood up in the pulpit and we shared with every man in the community. We said if each one of you all would help us reach one, while sisters and the queens were praying for our community. We have done and trying to do everything we possibly can do. We've spoken to our former police chief. We've taken in some of his advice. So I say this when you ask what has council been doing since they've been elected. This council body, I speak for the entire council. I just don't speak for myself. I have been there with them. And one of the things that we're trying to do is we're trying to figure out how to get parents involved. How do you not know that your child do not have a gun? How do you not know what your children are doing? Just like school teachers, council can't be parents to other people's children. But yet and still, we have been there. School teachers are parents. I've been to schools every single day. And I appreciate what you said about our school system. They need help. This school board retreat that we're coming up on this coming week, I'm hoping that this year, that council and school board will not get in a debate about the budget and do the right thing for our school system and turn it around. Again, I can't think Again, I can't thank you both enough for being here and saying what you're saying. Out of the number of murders that you were talking about, a large number of those, and people don't like to hear the facts, but they're African-American, young people. And Reverend Bridgeforth, who's sitting behind you, has been working diligently in our community trying to make a difference. So I close with this, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to thank council for what you are doing and what you're trying to do, but we need everybody. And those three goals, when Mark Aaron asked me, and I don't even like to talk about myself, I said, we're going to focus on those three goals that council worked so hard to do. Number one was attacking violent crime. That was number one for a reason, because we can't get to number two, education, and number three, grow the city, if we don't do something about number one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let me just add to what Vice Mayor Jones said when he said no media was present at the retreat. They were all, all media, all TVs, all print media, all were invited. They chose not to attend.
Councilman Campbell.
I am thankful for the comments tonight, because that's what it's going to take. It's a community effort. I know that council, we have discussed this, been proactive. The other issue that disturbs me is there's more community activities last year than ever before. More churches doing community days, law enforcement days, Boys and Girls Club, the hospital, the peace walk, and so on and so forth. It's disturbing to us. But what we have to do is continue to keep it before the people, because it's a community effort in every kind of way. We all are concerned. Now, I'm not all that interested about being in front of the media, like what the mayor just said. That's not the purpose of trying to stop something, is us working together. It's just not a one person trying to do something, it's a community effort coming together to deal with a serious problem. And I can truly say that every councilman here, we love the city of Danville, we care for it, and we're doing everything possible within our means and wish we could come up with more ideas to make a difference. And I'm asking for mothers, I've been speaking out on Mothers Against Vows, because I think mothers can have a great impact. I think young ladies can have an impact on dealing with some of these young men. It's a serious problem. We have to continue, use all type of initiative, plan out some type of youth, summer jobs this summer, whatever it takes, funding, we have to do it, because it'll pay off in the long run, and this is, sixteen was an unusual year. But what we're doing right now and talking about is this is the first session of a new year. And I thank you for coming tonight. I thank you so much for everything that you're saying, but we are interested and we are moving forward and we're dealing with it. This is what it's going to take, is to take continuous conversations and viewpoints, and all of us coming together to make a difference in this community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. I know there are concerns all over our city, our region, our state, about what's happening in Danville. And I know factually that all council members are concerned and are actively involved and engaged in talking to the community. One of the easiest things to do is to point fingers, I'm not saying anyone's doing that, or blame, but people look to their government. They're supposed to look to their government with regard to issues in their city. We are the government for Danville. We have been talking about these kind of issues for many, many years. The conversation did not just begin. We talked about how we support our educational system, how we support bringing more jobs into our city, more infrastructure, our law enforcement personnel, the list goes on. We could spend probably a few weeks talking about Danville demographics, and they may be indicators of our problems in terms of poverty, unemployment, single-parent household, et cetera. The list goes on and on and on. Educational rate, graduation rate, those are indicators, but they have not yielded the exact response in terms of what needs to be done to stop this. I am not one to say Danville is not the only city that has issues. Others have them around the country, but it does not mean that Danville ought to have them too. Literally, everywhere I go, literally, church, grocery, gas stations, shopping, wherever I am, this conversation comes up and we talk about this issue, and I'm glad we do. It is an issue, while government is certainly trying to address it, government cannot do this without the full support of the community. We need that. I hope we also focus, as we talk about this, on the good in our city. The great majority of our people are doing great things. We were told this crime issue between the ages of fifteen and twenty-five, some a little younger and some a little older, but the great majority of people in that age range, younger and older, are good people in our city. I read the Chicago article about the 2.7 million people, about the murder rate. I also read where the mayor added 1,000 new police officers, but it did not solve the problem. I also read where perhaps police officers in Chicago in that article are not maybe enforcing the law as they normally would do because of all of the pushback from the community. I find that interesting. About finish, Mayor. I certainly hope, and I do believe, that the great majority of people in our city know that we have wonderful law enforcement personnel who put their lives on the line every day. They don't have to do it, we thank them for that, they have families too, so we must be supportive of them and supportive of each other. Everyone in this city, to include each of the nine of us, are affected by this crime rate, whether by threat and/or some actual experience. I have had it, that experience, so I understand. So I hope we continue to have this conversation, continue to come to your government, but I pray that we don't start pointing fingers, that hasn't happened yet, I don't think, we don't start pointing fingers, but ask, what else can we do? So thank you, but I say to the community, we're your government, we are your government, we are concerned and we are trying, but we can't do it without you. You elected us to be here, now we need you to support us in doing what you asked us to do. Thank you, Mayor.
And it starts with me. What can I do? That's the question. And I hope you've asked yourself that same question. What can you do to make our community safe, safer, and grow Danville as we all should? Councilman Miller.
Just a couple minutes. I just want to reiterate what Vice Mayor Jones said, our number one priority is crime. That was our number one at our retreat, it occupied more than half the all-day meeting. We've all been to these communities, we're going to continue to go to communities and listen to the people. To answer one question, we've heard statistics that many of the crimes that were committed, the violent crimes, the murders, were from stolen guns. People leave guns in their cars. A criminal or person that's dealing with drugs, he loves to get a stolen gun because it's not traceable back to him. Why are we leaving our guns unguarded? You have the right to have guns, keep them locked up and not in your car, because people commit crimes with these guns. Parents, you know, one of the biggest, parents need to get involved with their children. We need a mind change. Recently, a youth was, an eighteen-year-old was arrested, or seventeen-year-old, was arrested by the police for a violation. When they stopped the car, it was pretty obvious there were drugs in the car. He was on drugs. When they arrested him and brought him in, what did the mother do? She lambasted the police for signaling out her son. Why'd you pick on my son? This is terrible. Why didn't she say, why was my son on drugs? What was he doing with the drugs and driving under the influence? I can tell you, when my seventeen-year-old daughter was caught driving eighty-five miles an hour in a fifty-five mile an hour zone, we didn't try to get her out of it. The judge sentenced her to community service thirty hours, and we said, thank you, sir. And she learned a valuable lesson. Parents have got to discipline their children, and they've got to support their children. So again, we, all of us, this isn't all, this is everybody's problem. Council, we want to lead the charge, but we need help from every single citizen to turn this around. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Please come forward at this time. Sorry, we had to delay, but we had to make comments.
Oh, good. I got inspired.
Could you pull that down just a second? Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Mr. Jones, since you said you're going to have a retreat on education, I just wanted to add, I've had a couple of middle schoolers in the school system at Bonner over the last few years, and it's been nothing but a nightmare. We went from my daughter being in the AG program, which was nice and sheltered and kept away from the mainstream, well, she went to the mainstream classes the following year, and the stories that I get on a daily basis almost, I can totally see why the kids return to gangs. They're being taught that they're going to jail anyway, and she said, and probably most of them actually do, but if you're being taught from fifth grade on that no matter what you do, you're going to jail anyway because you're not going to be a productive society for everything that they do wrong, well, obviously, they probably don't hear much better at home, because a lot of them get, they're hungry. I mean, why do we have a program now where we have to feed our children at school, because they are not getting it at home? This is terrible. We treat our kids like criminals. I mean, most of the time, the stories that I get, it sounds like she's in juvie. I mean, we've had problems, I've been in and out of the school with principals about the cameras that they have running, I wanted them to get the footage, and they did, and they took care of it, and that's good. But she now is in a class of like thirty-four kids, and she's one of three white children, so it is, I think it's terrible how we treat our kids in middle school. By high school, they're totally turned off about education. That's how we have the dropout rate. So if you are talking about education, I think the kids need to go to school, they need to be, oh, the other one I wanted to say, the library at Bonner is a disgrace. I don't know if you guys have ever been there, but the library is pathetic. They came, my kids came from Forest Hills where reading was the number one thing. I mean, they had AG programs and tests and stars and everything, and then they go to Bonner and they're not required to read one book a year? That is terrible. I mean, those kids should have access to every book out there, and they should be inspired to become firemen, policemen, nurses. They don't have to be lawyers and doctors. So there's a way to start in middle school. It's too late in high school if they're being taught that they're not worth nothing from fifth grade on. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Anyone else wish to speak on items not on the agenda? Please come forward and state your name.
Cecil Bridgeforth, lived at 709 Edmond Street in the city of Danville for forty years, and I come again with concerns. Several years ago, a few years ago, a young man was killed, hit on Kemper Road. I came to you all and were concerned about the lighting. Y'all did good brightening up Kemper Road, but guess what? Getting dark again. But I'm coming tonight in reference to South Main Street, from the bridge all the way up to DCC. The lighting is very poor. We have several businesses, and the persons who cater those businesses normally walk, is in walking distance, other's businesses, and at night, when it gets dark, there are a lot of dark spots. And to cross a five-lane highway where the speed limit is forty miles an hour, and everyone do not wear reflector clothes or light clothes, and when they have dark clothes, you can't see in those dark spots. A young man was killed the other night, and I believe that it may have been destined for him to be there, but should have been hit in that dark area. I'm asking and inviting all of you all to take a ride, starting at the bridge at evening time when it's dark, and ride down from the bridge to sunrise and see how dark it is. Now, truth is that once drivers hit the top of that bridge, it's wide open, and especially if the light is green, they're good to go. And if anyone is walking or trying to cross the street, you don't have much time doing forty miles an hour to react, never know, going faster than that. And another concern I have is the fact that on Central Boulevard at the ramp, some nights it's pitch dark in that area, and I'm concerned. I wouldn't want my wife, God forbid, she coming at home and something happened to the car, and she has to pull over in that dark area. I believe that if we're going to pay our taxes, and if the lights are going to be there, let the lights be worthwhile. But I encourage you to consider increasing the lighting back on Kemper Road as well as on South Main Street, because there are a lot of persons who cater to those businesses in the evening, and walking with no reflectors or even with dark clothes, persons who are driving have little or no time to react. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year. And also, the sign that above, you and God we trust, we are so much concerned, oh, I ain't, but I got a minute left, we're so concerned about the crime, and if we follow that and understand that until there is a change of heart and a change of mindset in the home, violence will continue to exist. So I agree with Dr. Miller and all of you that somehow we have to infiltrate the house, the home, that there be a change of mindset and more trust, not only in God, but trust among each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on an item not on the agenda? Hearing, seeing none, we'll move on to item A, minutes. Consideration of approval of a minutes from the regular council meeting held on December the sixth. Your pleasure. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes from regular council meeting held December sixth, two thousand and sixteen.
Second to the motion. Second to Councilman Saunders. Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogel.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Under old business, item A, consideration of amending the fiscal year 2017 budget to provide for general obligation bonds. I open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the general obligation bonds? Hearing none, close the public hearing. What's your plug? What's your pleasure on ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for the proceeds from the sale of general obligation bonds of fiscal year two thousand seventeen and appropriating the same? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget appropriation ordinance to provide for the proceeds from the sale of general obligation bonds of fiscal year two thousand seventeen and appointing the same.
Final adoption. Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Whittle. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Appointments, consideration of approval and appointment to the Industrial Development Authority, Vice Mayor Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution appointing John Laramore as a member of the Industrial Development Authority to fill an unexpired term.
Second, Dr. Miller. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Under new business, consideration of adopting an ordinance to rezon property on Calhoun Street. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on, at the public hearing on the rezoning property on Calhoun Street? Hearing none, close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Councilman Vogler?
Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning from OTR, Old Town Residential District, to TOC, Transitional Office Commercial Parcel ID Numbers two four two one five two two one six three two two one six two two one three nine nine and two three seven six oh, otherwise known as Grid two seven one three, Block zero one eight, Parcels zero 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 six zero 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 eight and zero 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 eleven, and Grid two seven one seven, Block zero thirteen, Parcel zero 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 one, respectively, of the city of Danville, Virginia zoning district map.
Could you repeat those numbers?
Only twice.
Second, Councilman Buckner. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Shanks.
Just a clarification, I just wanted to make sure the parcel number twenty-seven thirteen dash eighteen dash seven was included by the motion, and if not?
I believe it was, but maybe he would like to make sure that that is included before the second, just, just to be sure.
I believe, I believe six, eight, and eleven, thirteen, six, eight, and eleven and one included.
Six through eight and eleven.
I did not hear six through eight.
I read it.
He didn't say through, he just said six and eight.
Okay. I think seven was left.
But the ordinance is six through eight.
I just want to make sure.
I'll read it again if I need to.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Shanks.
Seven clearly is included.
Seven is supposed to be a part of this, and is a part of this motion.
I wanted to make sure that's on the record.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Consideration of approving a resolution to transfer land from the city of Danville to the IDA. Open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on the transferring of land to the IDA? Hearing, seeing none, close the public hearing. What is your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Let's try this again, man. I move we adopt a resolution authorizing and approving the city manager to convey by deed of gift the existing lot owned by the city of Danville located between Craghead Street and Limb Street identified as Parcel two three one zero four, commonly known as the Durham Hosery Lot, to the Industrial Development Authority of Danville, Virginia.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Buckner. Discussion on the motion? Please call the roll.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
See, consideration of adopting an ordinance for funds for litter control and recycling efforts. What is your pleasure?
I'll do a little.
Councilman Campbell, um, excuse me, Councilman Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget appropriation ordinance to anticipate grant funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia for litter control and recycling efforts in the amount of ten thousand ninety-one dollars and appropriating the same.
Is there a second? Councilman, Vice Mayor Jones, first reading. Item D, consideration of adopting an ordinance to provide funding for the rehabilitation of tax, taxiway A. What is your pleasure? Councilman Miller.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, an ordinance, I'd like to propose an ordinance amending the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget appropriation ordinance to provide federal and state aviation funding for the purpose of rehabilitating taxiway A in the amount of three million two hundred and five thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars and appropriating the same.
Is there a second? Councilman Shanks, first reading. Consideration, Item E, consideration of approving a resolution to authorize an amendment to the fee schedule for accepting utility payments. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing and approving an amendment to a contract between the city of Danville, Virginia and Pay Must Corporation to amend the fee schedule for accepting utility payments.
Is there a second to the motion? Councilman Campbell, discussion on the motion? Councilman Shanks.
Yes, Mayor, I'm, I'm still struggling with this item. I've struggled with it with the Utility Commission where I'm not a voting member, and I've struggled with it here with council. I would like to ask if Mr. Gray would come forward from the, he's Director of Pilot Can we talk through the presentation a little bit that you've given council?
Sure.
I'm sure you're, you've got it ingrained in your head, I'm sure, but, so, right now, there are about twenty-three thousand transactions per year where the credit card is used.
Correct.
And those transactions right now cost three seventy-five per transaction.
Correct, to the customer.
Assuming, now, that's just residential customers or everybody?
Any kind of customers.
Okay.
Any customer.
So, this fee adjustment that you're being proposed is for just residential customers?
Correct.
All right, and it's, it's unknown, it's, it's totally unpredictable about what it's going to cost the city, but, or the ratepayer. Correct. I mean, it could be as low as eighty-seven thousand dollars a year, or it could be as high as a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, just best guess.
It's based on volume, yes, but it's, it's, it's a cost of providing service to the customer, similar to the way we do with walking customers. It's just a different way of providing the service to the customers.
So, okay, and I'm kind of just throwing this all out there so everybody understands. I, I think I'm making up my mind as I go through this, but, but I'm having a hard time. So, it could be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, or maybe a little more, but probably less per year. And this, this ordinance that's being adopted today is just for one-year trial period?
It's a one-year trial period from July first of two thousand seventeen through June thirtieth of two thousand eighteen.
And the, the hope is, is you'll get more customers that will sign up for automatic deposit withdrawals to pay their bills, electronic billings, is that the hope? Which would offset the hundred and fifty, anywhere from eighty-seven to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
If we can push customers towards automatic payment and lean away from paper bills and mailing bills, yeah, that will help offset some of the costs.
So, just refresh my memory, three hundred, three dollars and seventy-five cents was fully incurred by the customer prior to voting on this.
That's correct.
And how much will be incurred by the customer after voting on this?
The, zero, the, the cost will be absorbed.
You're absorbing the whole cost. Okay, which puts Danville Utilities in a favorable position compared to all other utilities.
Only cooperas we found are doing this, but most utilities are leaning towards this method, yes.
I appreciate all your work, and you did all your work at the direction of the Utility Commission, at the request of citizens. My concern, and I'm still open on this until I hear further discussion, my concern is the credit card customer is going to create a cost to Danville Utilities, which is going to have to be absorbed by the rest of the ratepayers.
That's correct.
That's true. And that's the part that bothers me, and it's just a small amount, and if it was offset by electronic billing and everything else, I'm full, full for it. I might be for it from the standpoint of one year, let's wait and see, but I'm still struggling with anything we do right now that affects the ratepayer. So, council, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk through this. I'm still on the fence, but I'm anxious to hear, well, my last comment is this, the ratepayers will pay, pay the difference, the credit card customer will come out ahead, and not everybody uses credit cards, so there'll be more people that don't than do. That's fair assessment, I think that's very fair assessment.
The one-year trial period will determine everything.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question, Jason, was this a unanimous recommendation from the commission?
I believe so.
There was one opposing vote or one other that was, that voted in favor, that really did like it.
Okay.
And I, I may be wrong.
But it, it wasn't unanimous, there was at least one opposition. Councilman Buckner.
Mr. Gray, I appreciate what you guys are doing and, and what the Utility Commission is doing as well. I would also like for us to focus in the very near future on being able to accept credit and debit cards at the Charles Harris Financial Center to make payments on anything that we do there. But thank you guys for what you're doing, I really appreciate it.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And I think what you're doing is a step in the right direction for this to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Vogler.
Yeah, I, I too want to thank you. I, I think this is a, an idea whose time is long overdue, and I'm glad that we're, we're moving in this direction. Now, I did want to point out a, a couple things real quick. According to our, our packet and our information, sixty percent of public utilities waive or absorb credit card processing fees on behalf of the account holder, so we would actually be joining the minority, I mean, the majority, we would be joining the majority of public utility companies by doing this, correct?
That, that's correct, that came from my Hometown Connections report that was done on us. We polled Virginia Utilities and only cooperas are doing it, but yes, your number is correct.
Okay. Again, this is the year two thousand seventeen, and, you know, it's, we're becoming a more and more card society, and I understand that, that, you know, I don't know what the breakdown is, or who does, or who doesn't, but it also, that may change when we change the fact that we're not going to be charging people this fee anymore. I think that number may rise, and as you mentioned, if we can move people more to the digital processing rather than the paperwork, that that saves money, too. If we keep everything static and flat as it is, then, yeah, we're going to be absorbing the cost, there's a hit. But typically, when these things happen, it's the same concept behind, if you cut taxes and people spend more, it, I mean, you cannot, if you go off a static model, then, yes, we're taking a hit. I don't believe that's going to be the case. I think that we are going to see a difference, but beyond that, it is good customer service, I think, to do this, and so I do support it a hundred percent. Thank you.
Councilman Miller.
Yeah, I, for one, never paid by credit card, I paid by check, but if, I, I think about this, if I wasn't penalized by paying by credit card, I might pay by credit card. And I just wonder how many more people will pay and get, you get more prompt payments and collect better if they had this method of payment without a penalty. So, I think you might see a rise in, in people who pay their bill on time. And I agree with Councilman Buckner, I think we ought to, this is, I mean, people are used to paying by credit, and we got to get with the times, and down at the Harris Center and other places, we ought to allow them to pay by credit card. So, I'll be in favor of this. Thank you.
Councilman Shanks.
Let me just ask you, as a clarification to an earlier question, you indicated that co-ops paid this by, paid the fee by, that all the co-ops paid the fee?
The, the ones that we polled, they absorb the fee.
What is, all right, and, and the same packet, there's a dollar twenty per transaction by Central Virginia Co-op, and Mecklenburg County is one, uh, Mecklenburg Electric Co-op is one percent. Is, are those contrary to what you just said about the?
That's what they, that's what the utility pays for transactions, that's not what the customer pays.
That's not the customer charge? What about the others that you listed here, two ninety-five, the, like Appalachian Duke? Is that, who charged, who gets charged for that?
The customer does.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jason, I'm really on the fence on this, that's why I'm asking the question.
Well, well, let me ask you, is this something that can be tried and we reverse, or is this something we make a decision on and there's no, the cry is going to be too loud for us to reverse it?
That's what our intentions are, is to have that one-year period of, of doing this from July first of this year to June thirtieth, and then come back, show our results, and go from there.
So, we're going to try it for six months?
Twelve, twelve years.
Pardon?
One year.
One year, all right, but it, after one year, is it, is the outcry of citizens that paid by credit going to be too loud for us to reverse it? That's the question.
That would be a good thing for us, I would, I would say, I would say that would be moving in the right direction, that's just my opinion there.
Okay. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Shanks.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mayor Gilstrap.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Dr. Miller.
Aye.
Communications from city manager?
I have nothing this evening, sir, thank you.
Deputy city manager?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
City attorney?
Uh, nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Shanks.
I would just like to say that thank you for the city staff, for everyone that has worked this past year and brought us back into the new year with so many hopeful projects on board, city council for all the work that they've done in the past year. I feel very positive, very positive about the upcoming, upcoming year, both for the city and for the country, and I hope everyone will join in on the positive feelings and positive expectations, and let's move forward. I think the city of Danville, obviously, earlier tonight, we've heard some of the, some of the items we need to address, but I think we've done a lot of things over the past year that maybe aren't apparent to the community, that hopefully will all come in together and fold together and help some of the issues that we're having, and I see our economic development ahead in the back tonight. I want to say he's had a tremendous year, Mr. Tucker, tremendous year, and you give us much hope for the future. I want to thank you and your department for your hard work, along with all the city departments. Thank you.
Mr. Vogler.
Yeah, I, I first have a question, and then just a, a quick few comments. I have a question for the city manager, and if we need to follow up with information later on, that's fine, but I know we had made some changes to the parking at the, at the finance building to, to try to ease congestion, and we made some changes with the, the drive-through lanes to separate from the parking lot, but still, and I had a citizen bring it up to me again this morning, that parking lot gets really, really crowded many, many times through the month, and today I had someone say, you know, that they couldn't find a parking space at all to get in there, they had to park a decent amount of distance away and walk over. Is there anything else that we can be done? I know that there's some land that, that borders that property, I don't know who owns it, I don't know the situation, I know there's, there's a wooded area there. Is there any potential or potential to look out, expanding that parking lot some, making it larger, or something we can do to make more parking available in the close proximity to that building?
We could certainly take a look at that.
I, I'd like it if we- I, I, I'd like it if we could do that, at least to know what, what options are out there, um, because I'm, I'm sure several council members hear about this a lot. So, if there is a, a potential there, of course, it'd be a cost, and we have to, to look at all that, but I'd at least like to know what, what our options are. Thank you, on that. And, um, I, I just want to real quickly go back to what we were talking about earlier with, with crime and violent crime in our city, and I know that, that everybody on this council is concerned about it, and, and, you know, from top to bottom within our city, people are working to try to find ways to move us forward, and if you want to know what we've said, what we haven't said, all, all our council member, uh, council meetings are online, in previous meetings, and you can go back and watch and see what we've said, and, you know, if you type my name in and crime on YouTube, you'll find five, six, seven videos. You can go back three, four years and, and see, um, things that I've said and other council members have said about this. Um, this, this isn't something that we've kind of had our head in the sand on, we're very concerned about this. Um, and I know 2017, as I mentioned earlier, there are going to be changes coming in the way that we address this and the way we move forward, but it can't be about us, it can't just be the nine of us, it can't just be the police, it has to be the people out here in the audience, it has to be the people watching on TV, it has to be the people out in our community, all of us working arm in arm together. There's a lot of groups, there's a lot of people who are doing great things, who have great ideas and have great solutions, that will help, but if we're all going in 50 million different directions, and we're not working together and moving in the same direction, we cannot be as effective as we would be as if we all come together and get on the same page and figure out, okay, this group is going to do this part that can help. Well, my group is doing this, and this is what we're doing, and that we communicate with one another, and we talk to one another and tell one another what we're doing, and that's why I think, hopefully with this year, what we're going to be doing, focused deterrence, expanded community policing, working more collaboratively with our city departments, with different groups, community groups, church groups, people out in the community, we are going to get violent crime under control in Danville. It's not, we want to, we will, we're going to, it's going to happen, and it's going to happen this year. Um, and I know that that is a resolution or a promise or a, a, a determination of everybody on this council. And lastly, I just personally, for me moving forward this year, I just want to say that, um, you know, this past year, it, it's always a busy year when you're on council and you have a full-time job, you do these things, it's a time-consuming job, but it was an election year for a handful of us, and that added even more time that we had to spend away from our, our family and our home and, and, and all of that, and so, you know, I'm incredibly blessed to have a, a great wife and a, and a wonderful little guy at home, a two-year-old son, and, um, you know, my, my resolution this year is to try to spend as much time with them as I can, when I can, and to be a better husband and a better father, and, um, my little guy Kingston, he should be asleep by now, but if he's not, uh, not, not Kingston, thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
I guess for 2017, I'm ready to get to work, but, you know, I, I police six blocks myself in the city that I have an interest in. I've been doing it for 10 years, and it is the people that's, uh, that are in the homes, and I knock on the doors. You know where the traffic is, you can see it, I, I can see it. I feel like you'd take a more proactive stance, and I believe, uh, council has got different ways that we're, uh, working on and trying to get through, but, um, I'm out, I'm out there in the trenches, and it, and it's going to get better, thank you.
Mr. Buckner?
Yeah, uh, real quick, I was, uh, approached by a couple of citizens and a couple of, uh, of our public safety guys that, um, just want to address the, the people at home and the people here in the crowd tonight, that, uh, when you see a, a emergency vehicle behind you with their lights on, sirens blaring, please, please, please get out of their way. Uh, there's a lot of concern that people really aren't paying attention to what the, to the sirens behind them, or, or just make every effort that you can to just please move out of their way, and they're in a hurry to save somebody's life, and one day that life might be yours. Also, uh, it, I was a little touched by what was said tonight, um, by some speakers earlier. We, we most certainly are 100% as a council and as a city, working very, very, very diligently to, to stop this violent crime and stop crime, period. It's not an easy job, um, I, for one, have lost a lot of sleep, many, many, many sleepless nights, uh, lots of time praying about it and, and trying to come up with solutions, and we are coming up with solutions that will, will stop this, um, uh, or at least slow it down tremendously. I want to wish everybody a happy new year, safe and very prosperous new year to everybody on TV, all my fellow council members, um, bless you all, man, this is a, this is a tough thing that we're facing, and we're going to get through it. Thank you, Mayor.
Reverend Campbell?
Yes, very shortly, um, it's been stated so, so, so much tonight about the values of the community, and I don't want to be redundant, but I think that this year is going to be a better year. I'm glad to see the citizens speaking up because it's a team effort and working together to make our community better. We are praying for more jobs this year to come to Danville, wish everybody a great year, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Gilstrap?
Uh, um, first, I'd like to thank Brother Bob for, uh, being here and, and for his, uh, many years of service to our community and leading us in our opening prayer for the year for our first council meeting. I'd like to thank the citizens who spoke up tonight, and, uh, Reverend Bridgeforth, I go down South Main about every night, I agree with you. Like to thank, uh, everyone for coming tonight and for watching on TV. I'd like to thank our citizens for working with us and for supporting us, and I'd like to thank the city staff, all the city staff, for the excellent work that you do. Now, I request that let's move forward together, addressing our three focus areas, crime, education, and growing Danville. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jones?
This coming weekend, um, I want to reiterate that there's going to be a joint school board, city council retreat on Saturday morning, we'll be there all day. Just want to piggyback off something that Mayor Councilman Saunders said earlier, something that we think about, but we really don't put it into action a lot, and he said, and I quote, "We hope that we are not placing blame or blaming anyone." When, Danville Public School Board asks council to do the following things, and I'm going to share this to our community, if you have any concerns in regards to the school system, they asked us, they being the school board, that you would contact the school board. Mr. Hubbard, who's a school board member, I commend you for what you did tonight. The young lady addressed council about a school issue, and as a school board member, you met her out there so she can address her concerns to a school board member. As the mayor said, uh, Councilman Saunders said, if we can stop blaming one another or try not to blame one another, one of the things that have, ever since I've been on council, I've always thought about this. Every member of council had a teacher or teachers at one point in time. Our President of the United States had a teacher or teachers at one, one time, but yet today it seems like we give our teachers, it seems like we give our teachers, they don't get the credit that they really do. And I just want to take the time out and say to every teacher, every person in the school system, thank you for what you do. These are tough times, as Reverend Bridgeforth stated. If the parents are not doing their job at the house, he didn't say they weren't, if they are not doing their job at the house, first thing in that morning, those young people have to go to the schools. So, guess who have to pick up the slack? Those teachers, those administrators. And then, once they do that all day long, they have to tune in possibly to watch their council members, and there are possibly citizens who are saying what they're not doing. So, I hope this year, as other council members have stated, there are many of us council members who have strong relationships with teachers. So, I know the teachers are out on break, I know the administrators are out on break, but I want to say to you all personally, if you're watching, we appreciate all you do, we have a good superintendent, he's only been here for a couple, a year or two, and he said, give him some time, and I think it's working in our favor. So, Mr. Hubbard, thank you so much for reaching out to the young lady, and to those of you who are watching us, if you have any concerns per the school board members, please reach out to any member of our school board. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, I too noticed that, uh, Mr. Hubbard went out with the young lady to answer her questions, but I also want to recognize him for what he did for the community Christmas dinner. He was, uh, helped or, helped organize that, and there were a lot of volunteers there, and actually about 800 people got Christmas dinner, and a lot of volunteers gave up Christmas dinner with their families and gave up church that day to feed communities, so appreciate what you do, did for that. Secondly, Reverend Bridgeforth, there's at least five of us up here that drive that way every night, and I can tell you, it is dark, and I'm always dreading, I'm going to hit somebody, you know, I don't see them till the last minute. So, you know, if there's something that could be done to get the lights, turn them up there, what, maybe, you know, we're, we're putting in LED lights all over the city in experimental places to see how well they work, maybe that could be at the top of the list, or, because that is a, it's really a dark area, and a lot of people cross the streets, there are a lot of people. The, uh, the light show was a huge success, I want to compliment Park Rec, Bill Seringa, 2,550 cars, 31 buses, almost 10,000 people drove through Baloo Park. And, uh, Mike Mondell and I had a good time Friday night before Christmas, we, we campaigned for votes, not for election, but we campaigned for people to vote for the best display, and, and it was really a great thing, and I'm really proud of the Rotary Club, we set the all-time record, 355 cars came by us that night, uh, so it was a great show. As we approach the end of the year, you know, the next holiday coming up, I think is a very important one for this city, particularly this year, it's Martin Luther King Day, uh, and at that time, we always have a Stop the Violence March, and I want to invite as many people out there, come out, I know it'll be cold, it always is cold, but many council members have done on that march before, it seems like our numbers are dwindling from year to year, uh, this year we need to be out there stopping the violence, need, so many people out there, come out with us, it's a great event, and this year is particularly, particularly important, we stop the violence. And finally, I want to thank the city staff, uh, I, I'm optimistic, I hope spring's eternal, I always think things are going to get better, I think crime will go down this year, uh, the school system will get better, a lot of people are working toward that end, and economic development will get better. We've got a lot of announcements that are becoming, increased jobs, not only for new industries, but for existing businesses. Danville is going to prosper this year, it's going to be a lot better year, thank you.
Mr. Saunders?
Thank you, Reverend Bridgeforth, for coming tonight, and regardless of South Main Street, I think we all agree with that, uh, today I attended a funeral for someone who was killed in that same area you just spoke of. Also, special prayers and thoughts to the Burrell family as they go through the loss of their, their family member. Also, I want to say a special thanks to all city employees, not just 2016, but all the years prior, and thank you for what we know you will do in 2017 as well, and again, all of our city employees, many special thanks to all of them, and that certainly includes law enforcement and their families and everyone else who are trying to keep our city safe. Finally, I was, the holidays over at the Coleman Marketplace, and I was pretty much surprised to see one city employee in, uh, directing traffic, I think it was Ms. Michelle Johnson, is that your name, is that name correct? Directing traffic, heavy traffic, and I did not see a weapon, but everybody obeyed her. I'm like, okay, another skill you have, you did it very well, thank you, Mayor.
Well, I am just, uh, amazed that we got through roll call and no one mentioned the Dallas Cowboys are the Washington Redskins. Are, are any other school. Happy New Year to everyone, meeting adjourned.